Community, as we make decisions that might affect the citizens of this wonderful city, continue to remind us that what we are here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of service to humanity. We seek your blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. As we gather to make decisions for our communities, may we use our judgment in keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. We ask that in your name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. I now call the meeting of August 20th, 2019, to order, and we will begin with our open forum. As a reminder, the open forum is the public's opportunity to address counsel on any matter related to the city that is not on the agenda. Our rules and procedures for council meetings apply to the open forum and include disrupting a public meeting as a violation of state law, and no cursing is allowed. Your comments are limited to three minutes, and in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. So first, we have Steve Chisholm. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Chisholm. I know just about everybody. I am the CEO and President of C and R Cut Bottle Incorporated. We're a nonprofit organized to recycle glass here in Nacogdoches. So I want to extend my welcome and thanks to all the new city council members and old ones as well. I want to recognize real quick some of the people that have come to kind of support me this evening. I'd like all my folks who toss bottles or do creative glass recycling, would you please stand for just a second?
Oh, wow.
All right. These are some incredible people, bottle tossers and what we call the bottlears that make things. We sell our creations to offset the cost of our shipping of the glass. We'll talk about that at a later time. I also want to thank specifically Kerry Walker, Jose Olivera, and the staff of the City Sanitation who just provide absolutely essential support to us. We have been collecting and recycling glass since about 2011. Since 2014, we've been doing it behind the library at the satellite drop-off site. In that time, we have been able to ship almost 800 tons. Now, that is 1,600,000 pounds of glass. I know this because I've lifted most of it personally. That also, it represents 750 cubic yards, which is a significant reduction of what goes into our landfill. A very important point. For 2018 and 19 so far, we have, our totals are 164 and 1/2 tons, and we are now averaging close to five loads per year. About every two and 1/2 months, we ship another load. I always like to say, we have some very thirsty donors here in Nacogdoches. And with the possibility of curbside recycling and other expansions, we expect these, our numbers, to increase. So I'm here tonight to really just say thank you. I want to talk to you a little bit about what I'm grateful for. I'm grateful for the city supporting the drop-off site. It has been an excellent first step for us as a city to move into a complete and full-scale recycling effort. I am grateful for all the folks who are willing to drive and bring their recycling to us. You know, once curbsides stopped, people were just anxious to do this. I'm excited, I'm grateful about people's excitement about participating in a positive solution to a difficult and enormous problem. While we are working on the glass every Monday and Friday morning, there is a nonstop, constant stream of people coming back to drop off their stuff. It's to the point now where we have to be careful not to get run over while we're doing our work. So I realize that now is a difficult time to talk about recycling and commodities. It's tough right now, but it is now is also the time to plan for the future. Some communities focus on the adversities in this subject and do nothing. We here in Nacogdoches are committing to turning challenges into opportunities, and I believe that we can. You know, and I understand that budget hearings-
Mr. Chisholm, excuse me for interrupting. I'm so sorry, but your three minutes is-
All right. I thank you.
Can you save it and come back?
I will, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mary Roan. Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to be, is this supposed to be here? Okay. I thought somebody's still here. It's good to be back. I've been grandmothering, but I would like to address one more time, at least one more time, maybe more, the Citizens Review Board for our police department. As you know, I am a staunch supporter of our police department and our chief of police, and I have done a little research on the Citizens Review Board. I know they changed the name of it, but hey, I'm gonna call it Citizens Review Board. We have a system in place in this country for what they want, and it's called a jury system. Article 2, Section, Article 3, Section 2 calls for a jury, the Sixth Amendment, a speedy trial, impartial trial. We have all of those things already in place. We have prosecutors, we have defenders, we have investigators, we have all of these things that are already paid for, some of it by the taxpayer. I don't see any reason at all to add more burden to our taxes and the taxpayer, of which I am one, and so are you. So when this comes up, and it will come up because there are people who do not want our system of government, and I want you to remember that we already have a review board in place, and it's been in place since the inception of this country, and I just want you to remember that. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next person we have is Martin Pennick. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm also here in support of the Nacogdoches Police Department. My name is Martin Pennick. I've been in Nacogdoches since 1983, and I just wanted to say that I would not like anything done that would inhibit our police officers, our law enforcement, from being able to carry out their jobs in a way that's effective and that keeps us safe, and that we don't need any kind of outside of review board, just as Mary Roan said, we already have those things in place. And I'd like to be able to continue to feel like we have someone that has our back, that we can call on, and we trust that they're going to do their jobs properly and effectively, and that nothing would get in the way of their ability to do that. And that's all. Thank you.
Next, we have Keith Payne.
Well, council members and mayor, I thank you for having this open forum. I wanted to speak about the Citizens Review Board. It's been a topic of conversation, and my concern is, I'm skeptical, skeptical that this is less about accountability, less about fostering a civil discourse, and mostly about control. And it would be another Citizens Review Board, because I believe the city already has one in place, and I'm looking at them. The representative republic that we have, the closest to the citizens of the city, are the elected officials. It's you. And so I would say for you to be the Citizens Review Board, that the citizens of this city have elected you to. And I guess I should offer a trigger warning, so I'm about to talk about race, so I'll give you that trigger warning. I've been to a number of council, city council meetings, and if someone were asking me to describe Councilman Bolden, I would say, well, he's a black councilman. And for many, they would see that through the lens of race, and I would probably be racist. But I would tell you that the way I know Councilman Bolden is he's the only city councilman that has greeted me and shook my hand every time I come, except for this time, and I was late. So, and so I think that might be what Dr. King was talking about when he said that his dream was that one day men were judged by the content of their character, rather than the color of their skin or which side of the room they sat on. So in this situation, I see folks trying to make this about race, and I relate this. I moved to Nacogdoches County in 2015, came to the city for a meeting, and came through the university at the red light, and the lights went off behind me, and I said, what a way to welcome a guy to the city. I got pulled over. It was such a memorial meeting that the police officer wrote me a certificate of remembrance so that I might do that. I knew that this meeting was going to go well from the get-go, not because he was white or black, or not because I was white or black, but because I knew that I was going to be compliant. And everything went according to plan because I was going to be compliant. So I've looked at the video many times, and I asked if these young ladies at the apartment complex would have just complied with the officer's instructions, would we even be talking about this today? I think that means my time's up. Thank you for consideration, your consideration, and be the Citizens Review Board that the citizens of this city elected you for. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith Payne. Next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda, our items for approval, and unless there is a concern about the minutes, the chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, we're going to start with the budget presentation by our city manager, and then we will have a public hearing where you can make comments, and then we will continue with our budget work session. Mr. Jeffers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'll have to begin with an apology for the slide that is on the screen, because I was chastised by our communications director, Dr. Mahaffey, for my cheesy clip art. So I'll make sure that she does it better next time, but I would assume some of you like my clip art.
No.
That's two. What we're doing tonight, I'm going to make one presentation for the tax rate, for the budget hearing, tax rate hearing, and budget hearing, and also the work session. And after that presentation, Madam Mayor will conduct those two public hearings, and then I will return during the work session part and facilitate discussion, if you will allow me. A lot of people forget that the city of Nacogdoches is a municipal corporation. That's not to imply that we operate like a business simply because we are not. We are a governmental entity, and when it comes to governmental accounting and accountability, it's different than the private sector. It's not better, it's not worse, it's just different. And it takes a little getting used to, looking at all those numbers that we throw at you. And so what I hope to be able to do in the next few minutes is to break down the importance of some of those operations of the city of Nacogdoches. Whether our operating expense, depreciation, capital improvements, debt, we, or you, are responsible for $73 million plus in expenditures. Now, $55 million of that is your operating expense, and that'll be the focus of the discussions that we're having this evening. I think it's so very important to acknowledge our 324-plus employees, because they are simply what makes everything work. Can't pick up trash, can't work traffic, can't maintain our streets, can't take care of our parks, can't maintain a library, animal control, and the list goes on. And I think a lot of times, we forget all the things that the mayor and the city council and the city staff are responsible for in providing services to our citizens. When we look at our general fund and proposed budget, we have operating revenues of about $26 million, and we have operating expenses of about 26, a little less than $26 million. And I think that that's the most important part of that slide. One thing that the council needs to be aware of right now is that you have $1.8 million, and it's not shown on that slide, of unencumbered funds. So you get to decide what to do with those monies. As a conservative city manager, I would request that you leave the bulk of those funds alone, simply because we never know what unexpected surprise that we'll have during the fiscal year. And I'll point to, not too long ago, when we had a major electrical problem with the baseball facilities, and we spent several hundred thousand dollars to do that. We were able to do that from the unencumbered reserves. If we didn't have those unencumbered reserves, you'd be faced with a difficult decision as to whether or not you're going to dip into operating reserves, a 25% subcurrent operating expenses, which we typically don't do, or are you going to go borrow money to do those improvements? And I would submit that you don't want to do either one of those. Therefore, it is important to maintain adequate unencumbered reserves. In the general fund, proposed capital expenditures, they're not terribly robust. They're only a little bit over $1 million, but there's an asphalt truck, $220,000, that has to be, or needs to be, replaced. A lot of times, we can say, well, we can make it work another year, but it's liable to spend more time in the shop instead of repairing street pothos, and we need it out on the street. Down near the bottom, under capital improvements, is a restroom for Festival Park, which is behind City Hall, and I might add that that's one of the first requests that I received when I came 16 years ago, and we're just now maybe getting around to it if the city council agrees that that needs to be done. Under equipment replacement, and let me say that we use depreciation, so when we go out and buy a police car, we begin straight-line depreciation from the day that we buy it until scheduled replacement to set aside money to replace the next police car. So that's what the equipment replacement fund is. Not every item in our general fund is in the equipment replacement fund, some of it simply because it is that old, and we haven't replaced the equipment, and some, it just may not seem to be practical. The big ticket item out of our equipment replacement fund is six police units, patrol units, for $400,000. Now, when I talked about that when we purchase a police vehicle, that we immediately begin straight-line depreciation, there are some of those vehicles that have to be replaced early, and there are other vehicles that we can keep for more years, and so we're really looking at averages when we fund our equipment replacement fund, but it's made it a whole lot easier to take care of that critical piece of equipment, as well as something as simple as mowers in our Parks Department. They put on a lot of miles every year, and they need to be replaced on a regular basis. Operating revenues for the city, you have property tax that generates about 36% of total revenues, and you have sales tax at 24%. You have the inter-fund transfers from the other two enterprise funds of 21%. I'm going to go over again, council has heard that, and for the benefit of the public and those that are watching on TV, we transfer money from the utility fund and from the sanitation fund to the general fund to refund their responsibility of operating expenses, finance department, city council, city attorney, city manager's office, the engineering department, and other departments, and that's the basis of that transfer. I personally think that that transfer is a little bit too high. The easiest way to bring the transfer down is to increase taxes more, which I don't know particularly makes a lot of sense, and even though we have three separate major funds, we're all tied together. You're responsible for all of them as a municipal corporation. Operational revenues, I think it's surprising to a lot of people to know that 79% of our expenses is spent on personnel. Those 324 employees, they have to be paid, they're provided fringe benefits, and it takes up the bulk of the budget. So a lot of times, when we talk about making major adjustments with the budget, we're talking about looking at major adjustments with personnel. Expenditures by function, public safety, police, fire, animal control, they take 59% of our expenditures simply because they have the most employees. That's where we are labor-intensive with employees. General government, 24%, and really, that takes care of what we just mentioned, Little Lago, city council, city attorney, city administration, finance department, and others. That's the next largest item, and then you can see the breakdown of the other expenditures by function. Scared me. My fat thumb. In the general fund, when we look at personnel changes, and I'm only going to talk about the more significant ones, we are proposing that a budget analyst be retained in the finance department, and an easy way to describe this individual is that they are an internal auditor. Ms. Kerbo, your current finance director, she was doing that type of work when time permitted, before she was promoted, and then some diabolical city manager gave her some other responsibilities of supervision in order to save us money, and she stepped up to the plate, but then she was no longer able to do the internal audit function. I am confident that the internal audit position will more than pay for itself as we check, it's a double check, to make sure that we're expending money that you approved, where we want it to be spent, and we're not stepping outside of those approvals, and therefore that function is a best practice, and it's important to the city. We're proposing that a kennel attendant be added to the animal shelter. Our heroes at the animal shelter, frankly, they're overtaxed, and a attendant, kennel attendant, will make a significant difference in managing their workloads, and that way, they're not pulling a animal control officer off of the streets in order to clean the kennels, which obviously needs to be done so that those animals are taken care of. Under engineering, engineering assistant, that position has been eliminated via a reorganization where there were actually savings, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Speaking to the issue of property tax, and this is germane to the public hearing that the mayor will be conducting shortly, we have an assessed value of almost $1.8 billion. We had almost $5 million of new construction. That adds $31,000 to the tax row. When we look at the proposed tax rate, we're proposing a tax rate of 61.4 cents down at the bottom. You can see the existing tax rate of 61.69 cents. That's a very slight decrease, but that's deceptive when you take into consideration increased in appraisals. Our appraisal district was notified by the state that you're outside of the appropriate parameters, and therefore you need to increase your property values. So most of us, if not all of us, should have received a notice from the appraisal district about this is what your property was appraised, this is what your property will be appraised, and I think that the appraisal district is still conducting hearings from challenges for those increased appraisals. And so we're comfortable with these numbers, but they're not the final, final numbers until those hearings are actually completed. The effective tax rate, I'm going to bump to the next slide just for a moment. The effective tax rate is designed to generate the same amount of money as you did the previous year, taking into consideration increased appraisals. We're not talking about new property, we're only talking about increased appraisals. And so when you talk about the new value on the books, which is from reappraisal, then you have to make an adjustment, and that's what the effective tax rate is. So the effective tax rate is 57.5514 cents, which means that the proposed tax rate is four cents above the effective tax rate, which in essence is a four-cent tax increase. That tax increase is at 7%. We're keeping it below 8%, where if you go over 8%, then you have to have a vote of the public to approve that type of increase. The additional increase in the tax rate will generate about $772,000 new dollars per year. I apologize for the small print on this particular slide, but all that it shows is the dollars generated from the current tax rate versus the dollars that are generated by the proposed tax rate, and that gives us the additional $772,000 per year. When we look at the taxable assessed value history, you can see that until 2016, that the growth in assessed value was relatively flat, and then since 2016, there seems to be, not seems to be, there is some pretty strong growth. Most of that is because of reappraisals. It's not because of new construction, simply because we have not had that much. So what does that mean to the average homeowner in Nacogdoches? According to the appraisal district, the average homeowner assessed value is a little bit over $86,000. So in looking- So, in looking at the proposed tax rate, that means that the average homeowner will be paying five-hundred-and-thirty dollars and some change annually. And the effective tax rate, if that were adopted, then they would be paying just shy of five-hundred dollars in new taxes. That, if you adopt what the recommendation of my office is, that is a thirty-three-dollar-a-year increase or two dollars and seventy-seven cents per month. Now, I know that some people will say, oh, well, that's not bad, and maybe it is not for most of us, but then there are a lot of people in this community that they will struggle in order to pay those additional taxes. But I think it's important for the health of the city that that new tax, or the proposed tax rate, be seriously considered by city council in order for us to continue to provide the level of services that our citizens have become accustomed to. Also, the new tax rate will mean that in May, June, if it's the wishes of the city council, then pretty confident that there's going to be adequate money to provide a salary increase to the employees, the most important asset that we have. This next salary increase, it's proposed today, but I won't be here, and so a new manager may have some different thoughts. It's going to be based on that salary survey, which means that we're identifying employees that are paid below what we consider to be market, and it's based on that salary survey. When we did this a few years ago, we had some employees that didn't receive any raise, and it created some friction in the city. And so, I would recommend that the council consider giving a base increase to all employees. And then for those employees that are showing that their pay rates are substandard, then they would get additional money above and beyond that. I don't know what those numbers should look like, but it's something for council to consider. I think a lot of times, we don't recognize the value of the services that we receive from the city. Since we receive a tax bill, unless you have a mortgage and you're paying the taxes monthly, but when you receive that annual tax bill, it's a little bit of a shock because we don't see bills that big. If we are paying it on a monthly basis, then it may be less of an issue, other than that we have grown up learning to despise taxes. But one penny generates about a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars per year. Our sales tax, based on our population, per capita generates a hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars per year. That doesn't mean that each individual pays a hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, that just gives you a benchmark if you want to compare to other cities, what their sales tax is per capita, it will give you a more accurate picture. And if you remember, we said that that average residential tax increase would be five-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. When you compare that to some other common services, then maybe it doesn't look as bad. And once again, you consider all those lists of all the departments at the beginning of the presentation, that you receive in return for partly funded by property tax, partly funded by user fees, and partly funded by sales tax. But you can see what it costs to go to SFA. Typical electric bill annually, you're going to spend about thirteen-hundred dollars. I can say that with the heat, and my wife's finger only goes down on the thermostat, I'm going to pay considerably more than that. Cable TV, on average, there's some people that pay less, there's some people that pay more, nine-hundred dollars a year. Cell phone, twelve-hundred bucks a year. And your city utilities, water, sewer, sanitation, a little bit over twelve-hundred dollars per year. So, when you look at those, from my vantage point, that five-hundred-and-thirty dollars for what you're receiving is a pretty nice number. You're getting the value for what is being provided. I do want to mention at this point that the city council and the general fund, three years ago, or will be three years with a new fiscal year, said that you wanted to set aside a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year into a economic development fund. The hundred-and-fifty was based on that one penny would generate a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. Now, it's going to generate a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, but we left it at the hundred-and-fifty, so that means there will be four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for economic development. And there is, and this can be a discussion in the work session or a future workshop, whatever the privilege of the council is, what are you going to do with that money? Remember that our four B cities, where they take a portion of the sales tax and set it aside for economic development, and so, Lufkin most likely is setting aside a million dollars a year for economic development. We're setting aside a hundred-and-fifty thousand, plus the ninety-five thousand that we fund to Nedco every year, plus the free rent that we give Nedco, or provide Nedco, every year. But that pales for what our competitors are doing. And so, the council's thought at the time that that fund was created is, is that we need those monies set aside for the extraordinary economic development opportunity so that we can be competitive. Three years into it, that extraordinary opportunity hasn't presented itself, and the council has stood fast and said, no, we're not going to raid those funds. We need to hold that for that extraordinary opportunity that is yet to come. But it will. Shifting to the utility fund, you have a proposed operating revenues of twenty million dollars, and you have proposed operating expenditures of fifteen million dollars. That five-million-dollar spread there, that's all going to fund depreciation, which isn't enough, and it's also going to fund the replacement of new water and sewer lines. You're aware of the issues that we've had with our sewer trunk main on the Bonita and Lanana, and we'll be discussing that more in, at upcoming meetings. The utility fund proposed operating revenues, they're split pretty evenly between the water charges and the sewer charges. This is an enterprise fund, so it lives on the money that it charges in rates and not on tax dollars. When you look at proposed expenses by department, there's that inter-fund transfer that I mentioned earlier out of the general fund, showing that twenty-five percent of the expenditures in the utility fund are going to reimburse the general fund for the services that they are provided. Debt service is at twenty-six percent, and then water production and wastewater treatment are sixteen percent and fourteen percent respectively. Looking at expenditures by classification, there's that personnel number of nineteen percent. We rely heavily on technology in our utility fund in order to better manage our personnel expenses, as well as it's a lot more efficient for the operations. Proposed fee changes in the upcoming fiscal year. Four years ago, the city council did a rate study, and it was, or it is being phased in over a five-year period. The upcoming year, there is no rate changes for residential or any other class of customer, except industrial. And you can see with industrial, it's going from two dollars and eighty-nine, eighty-nine cents per thousand gallons to three dollars and nine cents per thousand gallons. I will mention that when the rate study was adopted by council, we notified all the industry, and so, they were informed, and we got zero feedback. When we looked at what was happening in area cities, we felt like, or not felt like, in most instances, even though we were doing some notable increases for industry, we were still below what they were paying in other communities. The rate change was necessitated by the drought of record, and that industry, as well as us as citizens, we changed the way that we consume water, and we stopped consuming as much water in order to conserve it, conserve it, because that's what we asked for when we were concerned that we were going to really be pressed in providing adequate water as the lake levels dropped dangerously low. Since that time, city council has taken an assertive program to rehab the water wells that were not functioning, as well as to drill, I believe it was two new wells. And so, now, if we are faced with another drought of record and the groundwater holds, then we will be able to produce enough water from the water wells in order to survive a drought. There would be notable curtailment of consumption because the water wells can't produce the same volume as what is generated by the lake and our water wells. Sanitation rates, there is no proposed increase. There's my fat thumb. Again, capital improvements, you can see that under, down at the bottom, that we're going to expend about five million dollars in order to do water and wastewater distribution system improvements, which typically means replacement, the eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars in capital improvements. Looking at the utility construction department, the five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars of that is for a vacuum truck that works in the wastewater maintenance, wastewater line maintenance, it's also known as Mr. Snuffleufagus. And so, those of us with small children and grandchildren, we understand who that lovable character is. Looking at utility fund and personnel changes, there's a new position for a GIS technician, and all this was not, is not increased personnel cost, it's a reshuffling of how we pay those people. Nobody was laid off. We had some vacancies, which allowed a lot of these changes to take place. We did eliminate the wastewater treatment plant electrician position, simply because we can't afford to hire one. And we're not getting any applicants for what we feel like that we can afford to hire, but we will contract those services out, and with proper management, we think that we will be a little bit less than what we were paying out for an electrician. Sanitation fund, proposed revenues of six-point-seven million dollars, operating revenues, and proposed operating expenses, about four-point-six million dollars. There have been inquiries about, well, let's add another brush truck. Your first-year cost would be about two-point-five million dollars if that were done, and also a street sweeper has been mentioned, and we will discuss those two items more later, but first-year cost would be two-point-eight million dollars. Operational revenues of six-point-seven million dollars, eighty percent of that comes from the route collection fees. Landfill, where you have individuals taking items to the landfill, whether they live in the county or whether they're a commercial operation, those are about nine percent. I think everyone is aware that as residential customers only are allowed to take one load, pickup load, of trash, debris, garbage to the landfill at no additional charge on a monthly basis. But there's obviously a cost, and that's built into the rates. It's certainly not free. Proposed expenses by department, there's that inter-fund transfer item, which is fifty percent. The number is larger, simply because the sanitation fund numbers are smaller, so it takes a bigger piece of that. Sanitation collection, cost us twenty-three percent of the total expenditures and disposal, that's the landfill, is at eighteen percent. Proposed expenses by classification, personnel services take twenty-three percent, contractual services fourteen percent. Proposed capital expenses, take note of the garbage trucks, three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars apiece. I think that it is critical in order to provide a reliable service. We replace our trucks in a timely fashion so that we're not having excessive breakdowns. Where I live, I don't recall a time that my trash wasn't picked up because we had breakdowns of the trucks. And so, hats off to Kerry Walker, your public works manager, as well as the crews that operate our sanitation fund equipment. Where we are today is a public hearing on the budget, as well as the tax rate, and then followed by a budget workshop, where we're going to talk about whatever the council wants to talk about. Madam Mayor, you're going to do the, which one first, budget or tax rate?
Well, I think we're going to ask if there are any comments from the public about your presentation, and then we will move to the public hearing, if that is satisfactory. Okay. So, are there any comments from anyone here on the presentation made by Mr. Jeffers? Yes, please come up. Yes, please.
Well, I just have a question about the pages that we were looking at. Is there a place online to print all of those off?
I'm not sure if it is those pages of the PowerPoint you saw, but you can go online to the city's website and see the complete proposed budget.
Okay. I just have one other.
The PowerPoint is online.
Okay. Okay, perfect. I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
As a taxpayer, this is always my question, whatever it is. There are, talk about raising taxes and raising rates and all this stuff. Is there ever any discussion about, for lack of a better term, cutting the fat? Do you know what I'm saying? The waste? The, do we do zero budget, or do we just base it on time before?
Okay.
Is there any of that going on?
Okay. We will have someone address that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Of course.
I'm sorry, Mary Roan, sorry.
That's okay. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Good to see you all. My name's Brooke, and I'm a resident of Nacogdoches. I gave a presentation, and I know Ms. Mahaffey, and I understand the critiques, I was her student. I get it. Alverson, yes. And in terms, in terms of the restroom at Festival Park, I think that's a fantastic idea, that, I think that's something that's definitely needed, especially since the city, I believe it's the city or it's the Parks and Rec that are putting on the movies in the festival park, like I think once or twice a month, and that new trail was just built. And every time I go across the bridge, I always see children playing that playground, and a lot of people either playing basketball or doing... children playing that playground, and a lot of people either playing basketball or doing some form of social gathering there. So, I think that's a fantastic idea, and I think it should be implemented. In terms of also, with the budget, just something to think about, I know, I've lived here three years going to school, and then moved back for a year and came back, so four years now in Nacogdoches. In terms of cutting the fat, to quote her, there is that, I know the police officer's vehicle's $400,000, and then the garbage truck's $660,000, so over a million dollars for vehicles, I understand that. There is their tank, and I looked up back there, I don't know if it's a Bearcat G3 or anything, any sort of that, but there's that tank, and I looked it up, it's close to $190,000 to $300,000. I don't know what the use of that tank is for, or what it could be, but in terms of cutting the fat, if it's not being used, my mom's always told me, you know, throw it out, if you're not using it, why have it? Right? So, if there's any way of being able to cut that budget in that way, I think that's something to look at and be able to use. So, I mean, I don't understand the point of it, maybe I will, maybe I'll look up some more research and figure it out, or someone can enlighten me on that. But it seems like this whole is a thing. My boyfriend always, he's a veteran, and went overseas and was in Iraq, and used something very similar to that, and we're not in Iraq, we're in Nacogdoches luckily, so to me, it doesn't make sense, or maybe that could be used to cut the fat in that term, so thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes? How are you?
Jan, I did not come with any prepared statements tonight. I'm really doing this for the benefit of our new city council person. I wholly agree with what Mr. Jeffers said a while ago, that the, if you remember from my presentation last year, that the interfund transfers from enterprise funds are excessive. I get my utility bill every month, and I look at it, I say, well, 75% of this is payment for services, and the other 25% is a tax, because a lot of that money is going into the general fund to operate the city. And if you remember from last year, I had numbers that showed you this is excessive. It's way beyond what the norm is, it's beyond what the Texas Municipal League recommends. And I wholly agree with what you said a while ago, Mr. Jeffers. It's excessive. Long range, what do you do? I don't know. Find sources of revenue other than soaking the citizens for water. I don't, I won't say that the water rate, the utility rates are excessive, but relative to the expenses that we incur to produce them, they are. And almost $6 million of that is going into the general fund. And I understand that general fund needs an overhead reimbursement for paying for all the overhead things that we've got in the city, but not as much as we're doing, it's probably twice what it should be. Again, long range, I hate to say this, but my recommendation was long range, look at increasing property taxes and holding the line on any, including the commercial rates on utilities. And as I said, I hate to say that, but I'm basically advocating increasing property taxes. I love your figures a while ago, on what the average household is paying for property taxes versus what they're paying for utilities. We're paying twice per year for utilities what we're paying in property tax. That makes no sense, to me, anyway. Again, for the new city council person, I would be more than happy to sit down with a hundred hours of data that I worked on last year, relative to this. As I said, I don't have an answer, but I think we're bordering on possibly a legal problem. If somebody wanted to contest the excessive fees, there's court cases all over the United States where cities charge excessive fees for all kinds of things. To give you an example, hypothetical, but if the cities decided to start charging $10,000 for a water connection, could you do that? Well, I guess you could say, yeah, we can do anything we want to. No, you can't. You cannot charge excessive amounts for services provided. And there are court cases all over the United States that will attest to that. Now, I'm going to sit down and shut up, and I won't be back next time to say anything, Julie.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Anyone else here? Council, since we're having a workshop, do you want to hold our questions and comments and go ahead and move to the public hearing portion? Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So, we are going to have a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed tax rate? Is there anyone here that would like to speak for the proposed tax rate? Okay. Public hearing for the proposed tax rate is now closed. And now, numbers, well, our public hearing for the proposed 2019-2020 budget. So, same thing, is there anyone here that would like to speak against, at this time, our proposed budget? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Ship, as you well know. I think the budget is conservative and appropriate. I would like to, the council to reconsider the item of adding a second brush truck. I think it's been discussed that there may be a technological way to extend the efficiency of the single brush truck without having a whole other, the personnel expense of an additional crew. I think that, I think that needs more consideration than I've heard in the last few council meetings. I think, you know, the reports of the truck just driving around empty, wandering, you know, we've all seen it, and we've all seen the, you know, the debris left in the street for weeks, which can't be good for the streets. You know, I'm no expert, but when it rains, water sits there. So, I would, I would be opposed, at this point, to the expenditure of a completely new brush truck and crew, without first exhausting the possibilities for extending the life of the current crew.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking against the proposed budget? Okay. Anyone speaking for the proposed budget? Okay. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. So, we are now going to start a budget work session with the council, and Mr. Jeffers is going to assist us in, or guide us in going through that. So, now is the time for you all to ask your questions, ask any clarifications, make any comments you would like to, about the budget, proposed budget. Mr. Jeffers.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'll answer those questions that were posed.
Yes, sir.
Concerning reduction of costs for unnecessary items, we've been doing that for 16 years, and we will continue to do it. The recent restructuring, restructuring of the crew and utilities is actually saving money. Quite some time ago, we did away with the deputy city manager position, and there are times that my wife lectures me about that when I come home a little bit too late, but that's a story for another time. But that one reduction there, it's been over 10 years, that's a savings to the taxpayers of over a million dollars. But now that I've said that, the new city manager, whoever they may be, may argue that it's critical to the city to have an assistant city manager, but that's a discussion for time to come. We don't do a zero-based budget, simply because we don't have the staff to do a zero-based budget. And moving over to my political scientist self, zero-based budgeting, for the most part, is a myth. There just simply aren't many entities, including the federal government, that have adequate staff to do zero-based budgeting. But we use a lot of those concepts as we talk about preparing the budget. But we do reduce expenses when the opportunity presents itself, and we will continue to reduce expenses, because that's what we're supposed to do. Concerning the armored vehicle, that vehicle came from the federal government as surplus. It was not purchased. That vehicle is critical in moving about in flood conditions. It can go places that other vehicles cannot. On more than one occasion, I personally observed it going into an apartment complex and then pulling people out, and there would be, say, three feet of water. Also, the vehicle is routinely used when there is a active shooter. It provides protection to the police officers, which is critical. Granted, it is a misunderstood piece of equipment, and I agree wholeheartedly. We're not in the military, and we're certainly not storm troopers, but we don't do that. We use the vehicle judiciously, and once again, it was provided by the federal government. Sammy and I agree about the transfers. We agreed last year, and I agreed this year, and yeah, probably the most effective way to get out of that, to become more reasonable with those transfers, is to increase taxes. But I think the council knows that that's probably not a viable operation. What we do need to do, and I'll pledge to get this done before my retirement, so I can, the new manager can be annoyed with it, is that we'll identify a target for what would be a fair, adequate, judicious transfer of funds. I do want to recall when it was mentioned about charging additional fees. We did, council was very, showed a lot of leadership when it imposed the street use fee, and that's being used very effectively. We get lots of positive comments, which we weren't getting before, about the improvements that we are making to the streets. But quite frankly, it was easier to do a fee on the water bill, it's not a charge for water, it's a fee for streets, than it was to do that type of tax increase. And I remember very plainly that your constituents made it clear that, okay, if you're actually going to spend that $5 a month on streets, then we're okay for it. If you do something else with it, then we're going to come and have a visit about your future on the city council or as a city employee. So, you do receive regular reports on how that money is being used and where it is being spent. Concerning the brush truck and street sweeper, that's actually a topic for the discussion in the work session, and Madam Mayor, I'll talk more about those two items when the council is ready to talk about them.
Okay. So, who would like to start us off with some questions? We can also do this, we can go through it methodically, you know, from the beginning, like the PowerPoint was, or if all of you have done that already and are satisfied, then we can just pull out the questions or clarifications that we need.
We need some really tough questions, because that's why Ms. Kerbo is sitting there.
Front row tonight.
So that she can save my bacon when I say, I don't know.
Okay. That sounds good.
I just, one question. On this unencumbered fund, is that something that adds up over the years, or is that one year to 1.8?
It typically adds up over, over the years. You know, a lot of times, that unencumbered number was zero, or awful close to zero. You know, you got to remember that with the proposed increase in taxes, that you could argue that $700,000 of that wouldn't be there if the taxes weren't increased. And so, you could say, no, we're not going to take the 7% increase over the effective tax rate, we're going to take part of it, or we're going to take none of it, and you still have a balanced budget. But I think it puts us in a precarious position when the unexpected happens. And I can guarantee you that since we're not replacing equipment when we should, simply because of a lack of funds, that the unexpected will happen, and we'll be spending some of that money on equipment replacement. And plus two, you know, I certainly don't, I guess it's just my nature, I want all that money, but I think it is certainly permissible, council makes the rules, and acceptable for the council to say, okay, we're going to take X number of dollars, and we would like to spend it on Y. Now, be mindful that on the street sweeper, as well as the brush truck, that's funded out of the sanitation department, so it doesn't come out of the general fund.
So, these are not restrictor funds?
That 1.8 million dollars in the general fund is not restricted.
Okay.
Except you can't put it in your travel budget.
So, that could decrease, depending on what our needs are, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I want to emphasize, city charter says that the city manager prepares the first draft of the budget. Obviously, city manager doesn't do that by himself, can't do the budget without the extraordinary skills of Ms. Kerbo and her talented staff, as well as all the executive staff, department heads, and all the way down. There's a lot of people that put in an awful lot of hours to prepare the proposed budget, but it is becoming your budget, as the representatives of the electorate. So, you decide how those monies are to be spent. I think everyone knows that I spend a lot of time listening, more from you, Council Member Bowden, than I do others. Jan knew what I was talking about there. Therefore, I think I know what your, a lot of your wishes are, and therefore, the budget is built around the premise that I understand what a majority of you might like to see in the budget, but as we know, I've been wrong before, and I will be wrong again. And so, council, this is becoming your budget, you decide what it is that you want to do, and I will smile and say, yes, ma'am, and yes, sir, and we'll, we'll make it work.
Okay. On the capital improvement, you have $210,000 for restrooms. Restrooms, how many is that proposed?
One.
Okay, so it's just one?
Yes, sir.
And that's on, is that to replace the one we have as an addition to the one we already-
It would replace the one that we have. If you've visited those facilities, you only do it once, and then you don't go back to, to those facilities. They're in pretty sad shape and have been for, for years.
Would there be anything in place to make that improvement in that area? Like facilities, you know, they have facilities that almost clean themselves, so.
Yes, and possibly, but I, you know, I haven't even talked about the particulars of where it's going to go. I do know that we will build a facility that we, no facility is vandalism-proof, no facility is destruction-proof. facility is destruction-proof, but we tend to build those facilities as hardened as it is economically feasible to build them.
On the equipment replacement fund, is the $400,000, does that include accessories inside the police?
Yes.
Last thing. On, on the, what you had as budget tidbits and sales tax per capture, capital, is that whether Nacogdoches would be considered retirement community or college community, the age of the citizens, that $197, could that be higher or lower depending on age, college, retirement community?
Well, it's a known fact that Nacogdoches County, which includes the city, has an awful lot of low income and a higher, even higher number of middle in, income or lower-middle income. So when you take that number and compare to a lot of other cities in the region, which we've done before and we can do again, we typically are noticeably lower than what other communities are. But there are some other factors, and part of it may be the lack of retail. Our retail isn't as robust as our neighbor to the south, but that's being driven, well, there, there's a myth, which is wrong, that if city council decides that you want to have a Target, and snap your fingers, and then Target will be here tomorrow. Target probably not coming to Nacogdoches because of the way that sales are beginning to occur online. Target's now introduced a smaller store. But if they put a Target here, they're gonna pull customers from their Lufkin store, and may, there may be some net gain, but it's not going to be tremendous. But I say all that, I'm making these assumptions, but Target knows pretty close what it's going to be. Because when you go and purchase an item and you give them your debit card, that information is captured, that you went to the store and you bought toilet paper. And so they're going to know how much toilet paper you bought and where you bought it, and they're gonna be able to determine whether or not Nacogdoches needs a toilet paper store. And so they make those decisions based on that scientific data, not based on, oh, we would like to have, fill in the blank. It's like HEB. HEB said, okay, we're coming to Nacogdoches, we can make money. Then food deflation occurred. HEB is quite secretive, and they don't openly communicate with us, but they're not here yet, and we don't know for sure when they're coming, other than that I will bet that they will be here, simply because they purchased the property. And if they sell the property, that's a pretty good indication that they've changed their plans and that they're not going to be here. But we are a secondary market, we're not a primary market, and sometimes I'm not even sure that we're a secondary market. And so companies are gonna go spend where they can make the most money. And so with our student population, which has less disposable income, and then the low-income population that we have, we're, we're just not as competitive in retail development. But Nedco keeps swinging for the fences and looking for avenues to be more successful. There is continuing activity in retail development. Part of it's being driven by local people who are investing their own money in the future of Nacogdoches, and they believe in Nacogdoches. You know, the shopping center that Ed Poole, what's his uncle's name? Stanley. Stanley's gonna get me for that one. But, you know, they believe in the community, and they're, they're making investment, and so Buffalo Wild Wings, if I said that correctly, is the anchor tenant of the next phase of that shopping center, and that's a positive sign. That's, that's good news for Nacogdoches.
Could it be said that the sales tax per capture could be dependent on growth, economic
Say that again, sir?
The sales tax, $197 per capture could be higher depending on economic development or growth.
Well, I think what's more important, and we're having this discussion with Nedco, and council will be hearing our report on it sooner rather than later, is that instead of checking the boxes on retail, let's, let's face it, Buffalo Wild Wings comes to town, there's another wing restaurant, we're probably not going to see a significant increase in our sales tax. They're just gonna divide the pie a little bit differently. So what we need is the creation of jobs, whether SFA grows and hires more faculty, or whether Mass Motorsports, which they did a recent expansion and hired some people from out of state, the manufacturer from New Mexico that's coming, that will have an impact on our community. But we need to have more than what we've been successful in garnering in order to move the needle.
And that was like how the low-income citizens would be able to get higher-paying jobs, is that would make a difference in that amount?
It would make a huge difference. And, you know, you and I have, have talked, and I had a conversation recently with Councilwoman Fisher, that we need to focus more on trying to improve the lot of our low-income citizens, and not just inside the city limits, but county-wide. That, that affects us. They come into town and they buy goods, and that increases the, the sales tax. That's very difficult to do. But the New Mexico manufacturer might move the needle, but that's for a small number of employees. Therefore, that's why we need more. And much like Anna Middlebrook promised me a bazillion dollars, Ms. Philpott has promised me a bazillion jobs, higher-paying jobs. And so we're gonna keep working in that, in that direction for the bazillion. I should have done a bazillion slide.
Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
On the sanitation fund, I showed $830,000 on the proposed capital expenditures. With regard to the brush truck, you mentioned 2.8 million first-year service. How much was that for the actual truck itself, two, five, or two-four, or something like that? And then four or 500,000 for the?
Yeah, it was two, two-plus, if that's close enough.
Close enough. If we were to add that in, what did, we only have a one and a half, 1.8 unencumbered, what were we thinking, is that totally within the sanitation fund? We'd raise rates? Or what was the idea there for funding that?
Well, and we'll come back at the next council meeting if that's what the council wants to take a, a hard look at. But if, if you will remember that you agreed to allow us to do an aerial fill at the landfill, so that's delaying the construction of a new sale, digging a hole in, in the ground. You're not allowed to call it dump anymore, or Mr. Bartlett begins to choke. But with that aerial fill, we're delaying for when we need a new sale, maybe even past, you know, 20 years. That provides some monies that can go to other use. We just gotta complete an analysis. And so it is possible that you could add a brush truck and/or a street sweeper, and you may not need to increase rates in the next few years. I will say that I have a problem with that because I think it's important that the citizens understand that there's a cost to the service. And so if you add a brush truck, if we, we probably should increase rates, and we'll complete an analysis on, on that, you know, a buck and a half, $2 a month in order to pay for that brush truck. Now, I'm gonna, you didn't ask, but one of the other topics with the brush truck is technology. Right now, we're not high-tech. We just drive up and down each street, which takes a lot of time, a lot of wasted time, creating a higher carbon footprint. But e- even if we were to do something as simple and say, hey, Councilmember Hens, we're not gonna pick up your brush unless you call and tell us that you have brush in front of your house, once or twice, and then you'll know to, to call, even though we push information out. Or we can create some technology, and there's some different thoughts there, to where either the sanitation truck driver can report it, or we provide technology to everyone that wants to put an app on their phone. And so all that they have to do, if they're sitting at their house, they can call up, hit the button that says brush pickup, and then it's sent automatically, and it's, I guess, two clicks of your, of your iPhone, or I guess I should say smartphone, in order to, to get there. Now, whether or not that addresses the issue of, oh, you take too long to pick up brush, I don't, I don't know. I think so. Now, one thing that we do do when we are behind after a significant windstorm, is that we put a dump truck and a front-end loader out to pick up brush. Oh, and I forgot, you know, our old brush truck, we still have it, and so it, it can be utilized also, but I don't know how, there's a point of diminishing return on trying to maintain that piece of equipment. We do things now when we're behind significantly. Typically, it takes two to three weeks to get over town when the brush is normal, if, if that's correct. But we all know with these oak trees, you know, I get to pick up limbs every week before I mow, and some of them are a significant size, some of them are widow makers, but I thought, ha, you missed me again. But you, but I take my brush, I have, we have five acres, and I take it to the back of my property, and I have a compost pile. So I don't even use the service, simply because I don't like the brush sitting out in front of my house. A lot of people don't have that option.
On the street sweepers, maybe this is a Steve question, maybe it's a think-tank question. I'm curious about the ROI on something like that. Does it do a, any, any way we can measure the extension of life of roads in any meaningful way to determine if there's a rough ROI on that break-even?
I don't think, think so. We can do some research to see what it is that we can find. I think maybe a greater issue, which may be what some council is focused on, is the growth of greenery in the curb line. A street sweeper's not going to fix that. May make it a little better, and you really need to spray a grass weed killer. But we have a difficult time keeping employees that can pass their certification, where you could go out and spray all you want in your yard, you can, well, you're violating state law probably when you go spray in the, in the roadway. But we have to have a license saying that, okay, we've been trained, and we understand the ramifications of using this product, impact streams. But we all know that a lot of those products, as soon as they hit the ground, they become inert. What sticks to the plant kills the plant, and there is very little, if any, residue, or at least that's what the marketing says. So in addition to a street sweeper, we're also going to look, okay, do we need to contract that service out? The state does, and so we can get the person who does the state, can they come? Oh, by the way, when we do that, there's going to be oops moments where you have overspray and we kill something in your, in your yard. But that's something that we have to be prepared to deal with, it's just going to happen. But I think that the street sweeper and spraying for grass weed control kinda go hand in hand. Now, when I was a, a child, dinosaurs still roam the earth, when we mowed the front yard, Dad, Pop, made us sweep the grass out of the curb line. And there are an awful lot of people, because you can look at their yard, and you can look at their, the, the, their curb line, and it's spotless, and that says, okay, they do that. Either that, or they get a blower and blow it onto their neighbor's street in, in front of them. But we also have more people that don't do that. And if everybody would be a little more responsible, show a little bit more pride, and we have some people, and they're always a joy to have conversations with, say, that's the city property, and I'm not gonna do it, you take care of it. Well, who's the city? I'm not, you're not, you probably come closer in the collective to being the city, we're all the city. And so we all need to pitch in, we all need to get along, and we can make things better. I sound like Mr. Roberts? You didn't answer my question.
Well, isn't it true, though, that the growth in those, in the curbs erode the street? I mean, isn't that gonna cost us? I mean, you were talking about the return on investment, isn't that gonna cost us more in the future?
Yes, it causes a breakdown in the street quicker simply because it pulls moisture from the bottom. That messes with the base, and so you can see some streets where along in the curb line that you have an asphalt failure. And it's because of the grass weeds more so than anything else.
And so we are looking at doing it something during this year?
We, we have been spraying, but we lost the employee that was certified to do the spraying. So we can't take Jefferson as much as we would like to and tell him to go get out on the, the spray truck to get him out of the office. But we also know if he did that, he would stop at every other house and wanna visit with someone. Therefore, it would be counterproductive. But we're working on the certification, and we're checking on contracting, and we can pledge to you at the next meeting, we can have a little bit more information to discuss about those two items.
I would like that. Okay, thank you.
And as a follow-up, particularly with the technological advances with the brush truck, to me, at least at first consideration, it makes sense to explore. I, I think the, having the, the sanitation person who's driving the truck around every day point out is a really good idea, and if it saves that amount of money, and it's something that we haven't tried yet, it makes sense to me to, to try and save that money. Back to the unencumbered funds, I know you said that you wanna leave it, and that if it were totally up to you, you would leave all of it. What would be an amount that you would feel comfortable with having there?
Well, remember, we, we've done some budgets with nothing.
Right.
So I certainly don't feel comfortable with that. Councilwoman, there's not a magic number. I, I would say, gee, it'd be nice to keep it over $1 million. Um, I, I would say, gee, it'd be nice to keep it over a million dollars. Uh, and then if you went below a million dollars, I'd say, gee, it'd be nice to keep it over a half million dollars.
Mm-huh.
Uh, I think a lot of it is, um, you know, what, what are we gonna spend the money for? Is it worthwhile? Does it accomplish, uh, a go that the council has? It doesn't make any difference what I think, it's what the council thinks in this particular instance, as well as input from the public.
And is it a one-time expense, or something?
Or a continuing, right? Um, you mentioned that the state got on to us about needing to do a reappraisal. The, were the reappraisal amounts that we came up with also tied to state regulations? Or how does that, how does that work?
It's, the, the state contacts the appraisal district, and if the appraisals are not within a certain percentage, then you're deemed and you're told they need to be raised.
And so we raise them up to just be within that percentage?
Within, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And all that's done by computers. Uh, they don't send out appraisers to look at every piece of property, and that's what the state does with their audits. It's done by computers, and they try to determine what the, uh, market value of property is in Nakadoshus, and our market value is significantly less than what it would be if our properties were in, uh, a metropolitan area. And those are the people that are very, very angry about reappraisals. They get hit hard every, every year. Now, be mindful that you got a proposed tax increase over the effective tax rate of seven percent. Next year, it's 3.5%. You can't go above 3.5% without putting it to a vote. Um, I don't view the increase as a hedge about what's going to happen next year. Some people do. I just think that we need it, uh, in order to act responsibly. We have other items that we should be purchasing. And so I'd just like to have, uh, the rainy day fund, which is what the state has, um, for those unexpected surprises. We may go through the fiscal year and, oh, unexpected surprises. I think that's a fair probability, and that's what happens, uh, most times. And also remember, in addition to that 1.8 million dollars, we set aside 25% of the operating expense for an emergency. But those are monies that we have never dipped into in the last 16 years, and I don't know when the last time that the, that the city may have done that. But that is in response to a man-made or a mother nature disaster. When something like that happens, there's an awful lot that needs to be done quickly to preserve life and property, and I visualize that that's what those monies are for. If the council wants to do away with that reserve fund, or reduce that reserve fund, that is your prerogative. I will, uh, make you aware that if you were to reduce that or eliminate that, then we are going to be deemed by the, um, financial advisors', um, bond rating. Uh, it will be lowered. They ask us, we don't do it every year, but when they call and run us through our paces, uh, over the phone, they ask us, you still maintaining 25%? It looks like you are. Do you, uh, have you ever, do you plan? Uh, they want that cushion there for that unexpected disaster. They want that cushion there, period. They're protecting their investment.
Um, unrelated to dipping into either those reserves or the unencumbered funds, but I do want to bring it up now, just because it costs money, and, um, because Mr. Chisholm brought it up. But, um, I have heard a lot from people within the city, um, about the desire to have a more robust, um, recycling program. Um, I, it, it's something that I care about. Um, I know that on the city's part, there's a concern for, um, participation, and so for the public listening, um, if it's something that you care about, I, I would like to hear about it. But, um, I would like to have more discussion about what we can do in terms, what more we can do in terms of recycling. I think that what Mr. Chisholm said is right, that we have a good, important first step. Um, I don't know if something else would look like a private-public partnership, or a manned recycling center. Um, I, I'm sure that there are a lot of options. I also understand the economic realities and that things cost money. Um, I would like to ask staff to come up with options, um, for alternatives to, to a more robust, to more robust programs for, for council to be able to look at.
Excellent. Uh, and I think council is aware that there is, uh, a couple that is, uh, working to establish a, uh, curbside recycling business. Uh, we have been diligently working with them, and, um, city attorney has promised me, under, uh, penalty of execution, that the city council will see the appropriate ordinances at the September meeting. Now, to that point, um, I think that there are an awful lot of questions about the long-term viability of what it is that they want to accomplish, and so I, I heard, um, public-private partnership. So should the city be doing something with that, um, startup company? Um, I think the best way to answer that is that we need to see your service plan, we need to know that you're viable long-term, and if you need a subsidy, then the council might want to consider it. Uh, you mentioned a manned, um, drop-off center for recycling. I call those a white glove recycling, um, operation. We can do that where we are now, uh, by putting up, I don't know that I would put up fencing, but that's a discussion for another time. But to have somebody there to, uh, supervise, and more so to help as people bring recyclables, I think that that encourages people to participate. Also, it would stop illegal dumping. I love it when someone takes a TV and they set it right underneath the sign that says no TVs. Um, but, but there are some options. Whether or not that will increase recyclables is yet to be seen, and I, I saw an article on 60 Minutes, CBS, um, this weekend, where it talked about China cutting off plastics and how it's turned everything upside down. And I heard more than once that a lot of cities have been forced to landfill their plastics. That's what we're doing right now. Um, but when those markets improve, and they will, don't know when, then we'll be able to bail those plastics and, um, ship them off someplace, e- even if we have to subsidize that, uh, a bit. That's certainly an option for the council to consider. So the current dilemma that we have with recyclables has prompted a lot of discussion, as we all know, and that's a good thing. Uh, let's see what we can do to, uh, improve recycling. We've got a lot of brain power at SFA, and, uh, it's always interesting to engage faculty, as well as students, in having that discussion about what, what might work. And so at the next, um, public hearing, um, we'll, we'll come back with some options. They may not be fully vetted, but they'll certainly be for something to, for council to discuss. And probably more important, we'll give you a number in the sanitation fund that may be available for some of these projects. Brush truck, street sweeper, recycling.
Yeah, that would be great, and just to clarify, I wanna be careful and thoughtful about this, and so I'm fine with it not being rushed and thrown together. Um, you mentioned the plastics and the commodities market, and, you know, at some point, hopefully it'll turn around. would there be a way to save plastics in hopes of that? I mean, I'm sure that there are sanitation regulations and problems probably with wear, um, but is that an option at all worth looking into?
We could certainly bail the, uh, the plastics. They would have to be stored outside. Um, I'm sure that that diminishes the marketability of those plastics, but that's something that we can take a, a harder look at, as to whether or not that makes sense. That means more manpower, which we can certainly address for running the, uh, the belling operations. But it's a fair question.
Okay. And then that keeps it out of the landfill, which, long-term, creates space. I don't know how much cubic feet, right? I don't know the numbers on that, but, um, it seems like there would be some return.
Plastic squishes, that's a technical term, uh, pretty, pretty well, uh,
It also breaks down with UV exposure, too, which makes it less salable, so that's part of the issue with storing it.
But also, we know that plastics is a, um, had a, has reached a crisis in our oceans, and they say that, uh, when we eat a fish from the sea, you're eating some plastic, uh, which is, uh, really exciting. Um, and if we don't do something with the plastics, and one of the things that they're talking about is that plastics, for the most part, need to be eliminated. And so you do see some restaurants who may have plastic cups, um, they're returning to the paper cups, they're returning to cardboard instead of styrofoam, off into a different topic. Uh, and so you have businesses that are becoming more, uh, sensitive, and there's nothing wrong, if we do it in a nice way, that if we're at a restaurant, or if we're at a supermarket, and we don't care for too much plastic, or whatever, then suggest that, hey, have you ever considered going to paper products? And that, that's helpful. Um, and certainly nothing wrong with it, source reduction. And we're working on trying to launch, uh, a consistent program. Uh, my favorite example is that, with my kids, is that they had to have a straw. And I said, well, you don't need a straw, that's trash, that goes in the landfill. And you can imagine the battle that ensued, that I always lost. Uh, it's the same thing when, uh, we go to a restaurant, um, and, uh, we grab a fistful of napkins, when we only need one, maybe two. And we take that fistful and we throw them away. That source reduction is to stop those abuses, and that's something to where we need some educational efforts.
I've got one more thing, and then I'll leave you alone. Um, it's 'cause you made a comment about it earlier. Um, you mentioned Nedco working, um, toward job creation for, um, to provide better-paying jobs for low-income people. Um, it's something that you and I have talked about and that I care about, not only that, but economic development, um, in low-income areas. I don't know how it's done. I wonder if there are, um, examples of successful programs that, that have done, um, that kind of work, and I would love to see something on that, too.
Uh, we'll be happy to research that, unless there's any objection. Uh, that, that one's a tall order. There are cities which claim to have had success, but what worked there probably won't work here, just because of the economics of the, of the region. But I believe there has to be an answer, and if we stop looking, then we run up the white flag, and that hurts the community and the long-term viability of the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Um, sort of going back to reserves and the debate between keeping them where they are, or reducing to, um, free-up funds for other uses, um, I guess, uh, I, I just want to express my, my opinion, um, and this is largely based on my Scottish heritage, which forces a certain level of frugality that my wife finds annoying a lot, but, um, I think last year, or, or what has happened recently with, with, uh, you know, the, our, our main sewer trunks, um, that, uh, that was unexpected. I think, I guess that's a good example of why, um, we should, uh, use caution with any ideas of reducing reserves or spending, um, unencumbered funds, um, that could be kept in reserve for eventualities like that. I'd, I would like to see us, um, certainly maintain the reserve, the, uh, reserve fund where we've had it, and with unencumbered funds, try to keep as much of that as we reasonably can available for unforeseen events. Um, and beyond, sort of touching on that and expressing my opinion on that, everything else that I had questions about tonight, anyway, um, has been addressed already, so.
Right, and you mentioned something that, that I, I will, uh, touch on, and that is the sewer trunk mains on the Bonita and the Lanana. Uh, we've already had preliminary discussions, and we have a lot of work to do. We need to identify estimated costs for what it would take to replace those trunk mains in their entirety. Um, had a meeting today with, uh, a financial group, and we talked about, uh, different financing mechanisms. The state has a program. Um, you always go shopping and look at everybody's programs to determine who might be the, the best, and so that's not gonna happen by the, the next, uh, council meeting, but, uh, sooner rather than later, we're gonna be talking about a proposal where we have to, most likely, uh, I could probably say definitely, are going to have to borrow money in order to execute those improvements. But, um, Mr. Bartlet doesn't, uh, ride around town and say, the British are coming. He rides around town, and he says, infrastructure failure is coming.
Yeah, we, we do have a, a rapidly aging
Yeah.
... infrastructure here, and so I, I think failures like that are probably going to become more frequent, um, as time passes.
Exactly. Uh, that's why our GIS mapping is important, and, you know, because of the location of those trunk mains on our two creeks, um, they become a priority. And so, like I said, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be discussing options with this council about how we're going to address the problems with those two issues. And we'll talk more about how much money we're setting aside on an annual basis. You saw five million dollars for water and wastewater improvements. Um, is that enough? Uh, if you look at Mr. Bartlet, he's shaking his head, no, it's not enough. Um, you know, can we afford more? And that's where you kinda shrug your shoulders. Can we keep up with what it is that we have? Which is one of the reasons that borrowing money is going to become an important topic. And I'm a pay-as-you-go guy, but sometimes that doesn't work, and this is one of those times, is those, those two trunk mains.
If the council, uh, because we are starting these, uh, workshop sessions, and we are discussing, uh, things, uh, that may need more studying, um, is there, are there funds available for us to access if we, if your staff If we, if your staff needs help or if a consultant needs to be hired? And what does that look like and about how much would that be?
Well, the, uh, the utility fund, yes, there's money available. Because be mindful that while we have two engineers on staff, they're not production engineers simply because they don't have the time. They manage external engineers on production and they supervise on a limited basis or rather inspect the actual, uh, construction. So, we readily have money available to hire consultants there. Um, ninety-eight percent of those are above, um, thresholds to where the city council has to approve it. And you, you know that you've done that recently on some water and sewer lines. And actually, that'll be the first step after we identify a funding mechanism is to, uh, hire an engineer to generate cost estimates because you don't want to execute the borrowing of money until you know a fair idea of how much it is that you, that you need. Don't want to borrow too much and you certainly don't want to borrow not enough. Now, when we come into the general fund, um, if we needed external help, it's got to come from that one point eight million dollars. Um, because I can't think of a department budget that, um, has surplus funds to hire external help in order to do that.
Any follow-up questions?
With the unencumbered funds, is it, is it allowable to use those funds for, um, effectively anything? Say, we wanted to explore, um, some, some technological improvements that the city could make, like saying, having an, a city app for, um, requesting brush pickup and that sort of thing, um, for the development of those things that are beyond the city's IT department possibly or outside the scope of their, their job descriptions. Um, is, is it allowable to use small portions for things like that that could see, I think, a, a pretty significant return?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, and I'm, I'm talking a little bit out of turn because I haven't been fully briefed, but our IT department and I think others, uh, Mr. Bartlett, GIS and, um, if I'm putting words in their mouth, they'll tell me later, "That's not true." Um, but we've identified that app that we think that we want. It's fifteen thousand dollars, which, you know, that's, that's not a lot of money if it's as robust as we would like for it to be. And so, after we fully vet that, it's not in the budget. Uh, but that would be an item that we might be able to have completed before the adoption of the budget, which would mean that the council could insert it if that is their wish. And if not, then we do a budget amendment afterwards. But you touched on a point that is extremely important, that we need to think more about technology. Uh, when it comes to glass recycling, you need to have bottle, bottle tossers, washers and whatever. The technology's not going to do that. But what you brought up-
Investment in, in efficiency in general, and regardless of what department, um, to me is, is tremendously important.
Exactly. And, you know, so we have our computers, we have our smartphones. Um, but there are a lot of applications, um, that we can use. I understand that if you want to have a city attorney, uh, in there remotely and you have them Skype in, that, that you can, you can do that.
But then what would Jeff do every morning?
He, he'll be, he'll be spraying weeds.
Spraying weeds. And Skyping in.
Mm, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so, now, we want to talk about future workshop topics. Um, does, first of all, does council feel that we need another session for an outside session other than what we have scheduled for our council meetings, um, to discuss budget, anything on the budget, proposed budget? I think that's something, you know, that if anyone feels that way, um, that we can discuss that. If everyone's good, then, uh, we're fine. Um, we don't have to decide tonight, but it would be nice for people to talk about, for us to talk about what we would like to discuss, perhaps at a future workshop, and then decide where we'd like to start. Mr. Bolden, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm looking at the dates. I'm good for what we have already scheduled.
Okay. Um-
Then I'm open for if someone else have a suggestion, too.
Okay. Well, that's great. How about you?
I, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I also feel good about it.
Okay. Um, and you all are good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, future topics, um, I know I have one I'd like to discuss. Um, Mr. Bolden, do you have one you'd like to propose?
Oh, yeah, with Steve Bartlett, sidewalks.
Okay. You would like to discuss sidewalks?
You can leave Steve name out there. Sidewalks.
Okay. Okay. So, a dis, a workshop on sidewalks?
Comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm. That's mine also. Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Oh, where to start?
Big one?
Generally, um, redevelopment, um, of existing neighborhoods. Um, and sort of going hand in hand with that. Um, starting to work on a general, um, I know this is something I talked to Leo about, but, um, a general, um, aesthetic standard for redevelopment, new development. Um, so that, uh, we, you know, all that goes back to, um, economic development ultimately in a lot of ways. But, um, you know, they all kind of tie together. It's hard to separate all those things out, but-
Of course. But if you had to start, if you started somewhere?
Um, somewhere, um, starting to develop and throw out some ideas for an aesthetic standard for, for whether, you know, whether it's redevelopment or new development.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Um, I guess depending on what we hear about recycling next time, I do think it's probably worth having a work session topic on that.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
When I said sidewalks?
Yes.
I mean, it wasn't that particular. It was cognitive activity is what I was really speaking of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So, with the, um, I also was going to talk about, um, us visiting, revisiting our comprehensive plan. Um, the plan was done in two thousand and three, so we've had sixteen years. We, uh, staff and council have used it as a guide in making decisions. Um, but a comprehensive plan is extraordinarily important to a city. Um, it reflects the vision and the future land use, transportation and connectivity, um, and the expectations that our citizens have for where they live. Um, and I think because we were so successful with the public's input, um, on our, uh, parks, recreation and trails master plan in two thousand and seventeen, it begs us to have a conversation about perhaps revisiting each portion of our plan, um, maybe every two or three years. And so, the conversation in a workshop would be, where would that start? And it may start with, um, you know, one of the other topics that we have brought up.
True.
Um, and so, perhaps we could combine a couple of those together. Um, and that would, uh, be a good starting place. Um, but in order to get started on something, we would need to decide pretty quick where we want to go. Um, and I don't know if it's something that's most import, we feel is most important. We feel is, uh, what?
Oh, no, no, just going to comment on the fact that comprehensive plan is such a broad topic.
Yes, yes. But it is, it's sort of like an umbrella. And then you can have, uh, we can have these master plans. Um, and once you get through them every two, three years, you start over again. It's time to go back and so-
I like that id- idea of sort of creating a, a rotation of subsections of the comprehensive plan.
Well, I think it, I think that continually updating, um, allows us to adapt to the changes that are happening in the future and, and what needs are there and what, uh, the future will look like. So, you can do that. Um, so, if, uh, we're good on the budget?
I have one more thing on the work session topic.
Oh, of course. Go right ahead.
I, I see social justice written here.
Yes.
And I think that we've had, and I appreciate a lot of, um, citizen participation on this. I mean, this is written in a more general way. But, um, with what we've been talking about, uh, uh, you know, people for and against a citizens review board. And it's just, it's been a topic that people, I think, care about. And I think it's, it's worth providing space to have a larger discussion about it that I think that maybe three minutes might not do full justice, um, to people who, who have more thoughts about it. And it's something that we're seeing come up over and over again. And I think it's worthy of, of addressing in some way.
In a workshop session?
I think so.
If you'd like to. Okay. So, we had talked before, uh, when we first started our workshops about, oh, well, first of all, does anyone else have anything else they would like to put forward for discussion? Okay. So, we had talked about limiting our workshops to two topics. Um, uh, and then limit that to about an hour each to begin with. Is that still something, uh, we, you know, we've only done what, one or two of these workshops? So, is that still something you feel good that you would like to want to continue with those kind of loose guidelines? Um, or do you see, would you, anyone like to propose a change to that format?
I think that there are some topics, like with the economic development topic that Garth spearheaded, that I would either like to see revisited or that doesn't feel like an hour really does justice to it. And so, I don't know if that means we talk about it until we're done talking about it as opposed to limiting it to an hour or saying, "Okay, we're going to limit to an hour." I think both would work. Limit to an hour and then say, "To be continued."
Right.
Because it felt like, I mean, it's such a big thing that-
Absolutely is.
Where do we go?
So, I, i- in general, I like the hour. One, one thing I like about it is it's going to unearth subtopics. So, like the comprehensive plan is just like economic development to me. There's nineteen things in economic development. We could have Larissa talk about nineteen of them. Uh, but, point being, I, I like that we, we're getting a lot, I'm getting a lot more feedback from the public, which is fantastic. They're engaged and they're interested. So, I like the idea of just, if it's comprehensive planning, awesome, let's talk about that and see what comes out of that. Maybe it's sidewalks, maybe it's connectivity or whatever. And I think we can generate a lot more interest. But we can, if we can keep a living document of the different, uh, things that we've come up with already and then begin to add to those after we've unearthed those in the more general meetings, I think that's helpful. But an hour's good because you can only beat something to death for so long there, uh, in one setting without going out and doing more research and coming back.
Right, sure.
But for a lot of things, I think an hour is only going to be a starting point. Some things we can, we can sort of complete discussion in that time, or at least the bulk of it, but-
Part one of twenty.
But, yeah. There'll be a lot of those. But, uh, I, I like that format as a starting point, a jumping off point for a lot of these topics.
So, um, then what we, the council needs to do then, I would suggest, is, um, we decide on two topics we would like to touch on at our next workshop. And this would be, uh, would this be the second meeting in September after we adopt the budget? Correct? Okay. So, it would be next month. So, um, you can loosely propose it. It's not something we need to, I mean, we have to vote on. We can just come to a consensus, I believe. And, uh, uh, but someone would need to propose, uh, the two topics.
Is there a best practice that we roll through? Roy and I got to pick the last two. Is there a best practice there that you've seen? Mr. Juppers, or?
No, I, I, I think it's just purely what the, the majority wants. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't make any difference who proposes. And nobody on the council is bashful and, uh, they're not, you're not intimidated by anybody else on the council, other than some of you may be afraid of the, uh, never mind. I don't want to say it.
Um, I sort of like the idea of picking, uh, maybe a couple of items that are, uh, different from each other. So, one that doesn't necessarily, um, you know, overlap, uh, which could be, um, the connectivity or sidewalks or, I guess, maybe I, well, I'd like, wanted to start with the comprehensive plan. So, maybe the comprehensive plan and recycling or, um, or, or social justice, the other one. The redevelopment may come out of, we may be able to roll that in with the comprehensive plan.
That, that can tie in with a lot of different, uh-
Okay.
Where a connectivity can roll into the comprehensive plan.
Exactly, exactly. That's, you're absolutely right. So, then it would become, uh, and I guess recycling could too. So, it becomes, I liked your idea since you all had chosen the last, I mean, those were your last two. So, which one would you like to visit?
Recy, recycling, even though it's, it, I think it has potential to maybe come out of comprehensive plan. I, I think I would like to have a separate one on that.
Okay. So, is that, so comprehensive plan and recycling? And we could even do them, we can do the recycling first and then go in or however we want to do that?
Yeah, that may be the better way to focus on recycling without it's-
Okay.
Getting lost in the larger comprehensive plan discussion.
Yeah, because it may be that whatever comes out of comprehensive plan becomes one of the items on subsequent workshops. And, and we visit that with another, uh, discussion topic. Okay, so-
That's for September twentieth?
Um, is that the third Tuesday of the month?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, yes. So, we will discuss recycling and, uh, comprehensive plan.
And I'd like to make a request that we keep this doc, this list living. And if we could add affordable housing on there just for some future time as well, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, are we having executive session this evening?
No, ma'am.
No. Okay. Then, I, uh, will adjourn our meeting for August twentieth. Thank you all.